Twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen Town Council Meeting. Roll call.
Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Andy Key.
Here.
Trey Robey.
Here.
Luke Gier.
Present.
Tyson Hacking. Matt Belgrin.
Here.
Rich Gardner.
Andy, would you lead us in vocation, please?
Sure. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us here today. We thank you for this great community that we call home. We just ask that you help guide us into making good decisions for the betterment of this community, and also ask that you watch over our troops as they fight for what we love back at home. In Jesus's name, amen.
Lisa, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of the meeting. Discussion and action to approve the minutes of the March twelfth, two thousand nineteen Town Council Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March twelfth meeting.
Motion is made by Andy, second by Trey. Any others discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'm abstaining from that.
Okay. Item six, petitions and public input. The CNCC Flight Team, thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us. Hi, so I'm Rachel Northup. I'm the captain, and I'm part of the National Intercollegiate Flight Team, and these are some of the other team members, Zach Robertson and James Whalen. And tonight, we just wanted to come to tell you about what NIFA does, and then also where our team is headed in the next few months. So, maybe you don't know quite about what NIFA does, but basically, it's a group of pilots at the collegiate level that come from various backgrounds. A lot of us have different goals of where we would like to go. Some of us want to go be like bush pilots in Alaska, some of us want to do cargo or work for an airline, but at the end of the day, one thing that we all want to do is become better in our career. And we like to do that by expanding our knowledge through the NIFA competitions. There's normally a regional competition every fall. Ours was in Billings, Montana last fall. It was in October. And then the top two teams from each region will then go to compete in a national competition in the spring. And this year, that's in Janesville, Wisconsin. And just to give you a little picture of who we compete against, those are the regions. As you can see, ours is very broad. Some of our past achievements that we're very proud of is that we qualified for Nationals five times in the last ten years. So as you can see, those were the specific years that we qualified for Nationals. And then in two thousand eleven, we were the top two year school there. And in that year, we also won the Intercollegiate Progress Award, meaning that we had improved the most from the previous year that we competed. So our achievements for this year, at our regional competition, we were second place, and that was behind the Air Force Academy, which we're very proud of, of all people to come in second place, too. Hopefully, it would be them.
Good job.
Thank you. And another achievement that we're really proud of is that we're only the two-year college there in that region. When we're going up against these really big universities like Utah State and Rocky Mountain College and even Denver Metro, those students often will come back and they'll gain more experience, they become more specialized in their competition, which really puts us at a disadvantage for our size of school. And when our team goes to compete, our team members have to be a little more well-rounded in order to compete. And so that being said, our goal for Nationals is to be the top two-year team. Now, if you're wondering what we actually do at these competitions, there's two types of events. There's ground and flight events, and I'll let James explain a little more about those.
The landing events test, that's really loud. The landing events test pilot's skill at maneuvering and manipulating the aircraft. The goal being to land as close as possible to a target line within a box from one hundred feet before to two hundred feet after the line. The distance in feet from the aircraft's touchdown to the line is the pilot's score. The lowest cumulative score from two landings plus any technique penalty points wins. In power on landings, the pilot decides when to reduce power, but may not add power after reducing it. And in power off landings, they have to reduce power to specified point and then correctly control the glide for the rest of the approach to touchdown. In the navigation event, the pilot has thirty minutes to plan a cross-country flight over a three- to five-leg course between seventy and a hundred and twenty nautical miles, and then submit a flight plan, including estimated time en route for each leg, total elapsed time, and fuel consumption. Penalty points are assigned for flight deviations, as well as errors in time calculations. One point for every second off during each leg and total time, as well as errors in fuel calculations, and again, the lowest point wins. The objective of the message drop event is to hit two targets on the ground with message containers dropped from a plane two hundred feet above the ground. This requires coordination between the pilot and the drop master. The contestant whose containers land with the lowest total distance from each target is the winner. The Crew Resource Management Event tests contestants' problem-solving ability. A real-time simulated flight scenario presents a mix of simple problems and complex situations which the contestants must work together to resolve. Penalty points are awarded or are assigned for errors and deviations with, again, the lowest score winning. The Ground Trainer Event tests the contestant's ability to fly solely by reference to instruments in a flight training device. Flying a predetermined pattern, the contestants must show proficiency in maintaining altitude, heading, and airspeed, with penalty points being assigned each second for every foot off altitude, degree off heading, and knot off airspeed, and again, the lowest score wins. In the pre-flight inspection event, an aircraft is purposely bugged with at least thirty unairworthy discrepancies, and then the contestant is given fifteen minutes to pre-flight the plane and find as many of those discrepancies as possible. The Simulated Comprehensive Aircraft Navigation, or SCAN, and Computer Accuracy Events are written exams, the first covering flight planning and regulations knowledge during a simulated cross-country flight, and the second involving problems on time, speed, distance, wind corrections, fuel calculations, and conversion factors using only a manual flight computer. In the Aircraft Recognition Event, slides of aircraft are shown on screen for three seconds, and then competitors have fifteen seconds to identify the aircraft's manufacturer, model number, and common name. And I believe Zach is going to present the team.
Yep. So, my name's Zach, just here to kind of round things out. There are a lot of benefits to this kind of competition. Not only are we getting to know the people that we are most likely going to be working with in our career, because aviation is not a very large community, so chances are, we're going to encounter one of the people we competed against somewhere in the future, as well as it gives us a good opportunity to network with what would be future employers, especially at the national level. There's going to be a lot of like company reps and people in position where it's going to be good to know them when we're trying to find ourselves a career once we get out of school. And of course, the competition of it is pretty key, because that's what it is, and it is excellence through competition that really helps show what we've done, and the competition aspect also gives us an opportunity to get better. I feel like I have learned an immense amount just at the practices for all this, and then even more when we actually go to the competition. And safety, obviously, when you have that many planes and teams and people going, it's a pretty well-choreographed dance that just kind of gets you prepared for what's going to be expected of you in the future, because not a lot of margin for error in the aviation community. And of course, the teamwork, recognizing who is good at what on your team and letting them excel in the areas that they're good at as well. And now, we're going to meet the team. So, this was actually our celebration picture after we just learned about twenty minutes before this that we had won second place in our regionals, and you've got to get a picture to commemorate the moment. And the team leaders that we got, the three on the left are coaches. We have Jason Kruger and Kyle Baker, who are kind of the head coaches, more or less, and Wilder Bolov, lovingly known as the Doctor on our team. He actually went to, he was on the NIFA team for the two years at Hanson School here, and his experience is really helpful as well. He's a very smart cookie. And of course, Rachel Northup, the boss lady, the captain, who is going to lead us to victory. And just a quick run-through of who we have. We have Lexi Topoli, who's unfortunately not going to be able to be joining us in Nationals this year, because she's actually getting deployed. She is in Air Force Service, and she's getting deployed here in the next three weeks or so. We have James Whalen, of course, the professor, who's really just kind of encyclopedic knowledge of all things aviation. Eli Fazard, elf on a shelf. His middle initial is L, so just elf, and then it somehow got extended to on a shelf. Jesse Joseph, he's a beefy boy. You know, to a hammer, every problem looks like a nail, so he's just kind of cut the name smash. Logan Abrahamson, alpaca. Mistook an antelope for an alpaca, and he's just never going to let it down. I hope that it follows him his entire career. Nick Chancellor, climb out, because he cannot say climb out for some unknown reason. Zach Robertson, Shrek. See, I really wanted to go with Admiral Thundercooper Falcon. Apparently, Shrek is what I got. Tim Maroney is Crayola, something about eating crayons. And Hannah Crossley is Bert. And what we're not telling you is that her second, Rachel Northup's second call sign was Ernie. So they were kind of a package deal, the whole competition.
So although our team is really excited to go compete and represent Rangeley in the western slope of Colorado at this competition, it's going to come at a great cost for our team. Our goal is to raise twenty-five thousand dollars in order to cover some of the costs that you see there on the screen, like aircraft rental and registration, food and lodging. And our goal is to get this amount by April twentieth, which is coming up rather soon. As of February, we were around thirty-five percent of our goal. We've had some additional money come in, but we haven't been able to total it since then. We've done some fundraisers such as dinners, selling our apparel, and then also reaching out to alumni and some sponsors. Unfortunately, we still have a little bit ways to go. Which is another reason why we're here, is to ask that the Rangeley community would sponsor us and possibly give us donations. Although we appreciate any amount of donation, because every little penny helps, some of our larger sponsors, we do have a thank you for them, such as some of our apparel or a company logo patch that we put on our jackets for the national competition, that we'll be wearing those to. And then for the ten thousand, it's going to be a company logo patch and a sponsor thank you plaque. So, if any of you are interested in donating, then there's two ways. One is to just do a direct donation, and it can be sent to that address there. Or there's an online donation. We have a link if any of you are interested in that. And basically, we just need to make sure that in order for it to go to our team, that a special note is made for the CNCC Flight Team. And if you have any questions about how to donate, then SUSEManiego is a great contact for that. But otherwise, thank you for your time and listening to a little bit about what we do. And if you have any other questions, we'd love to answer them.
Thank you guys for coming. I think you guys are a big part of our community, and it's good to have you guys out there in many different places, representing not only the college but Rangeley, Colorado. So, we appreciate what you guys do about trying to help keep the aviation community in Rangeley, Colorado. So thank all of you guys, and good luck to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take just a quick break? I'm going to have to go to class, so I'll get them to take them there.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then you could go on.
Funny enough, we have to go to public speaking class.
You guys all did really well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll give you an A.
April twentieth.
April twentieth, okay.
Yes.
Four-twenty.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jason.
Is there any other petitions or public input?
Hey, Ed, would like to.
Ed, if you wouldn't mind just announcing your name so we can get it on record?
Hi, my name's Edward Balaguer. I live down here at White River Village, and you've probably seen me running around town on my scooter. I like to use it because it doesn't use gasoline. But when I go to cross the street, a lot of times, without the stoplight in it here, which used to make everybody slow down, because they knew that it could change on them when they were coming into town, and now they know it's not there. And especially the trucks, they just drop a gear, hammer down, and they keep coming. And it's been close on several occasions. And I'm just wondering if there's something that we can do with that corner that would slow the traffic down? A four-way stop, blinking caution lights, something along those lines. I know it's also a state highway, so maybe the state of Colorado might have a couple bucks I could kick in. And the other thing, all that goes along with it, is when they remove the snow from the highway, there used to be a sign up here, portable sign, that said pedestrian caution. It was up here by the school. Well, it's flattened out. I used to pull it back out. They'd put it over the side, I'd pull it back out. There's no sense in pulling it out now, because it's plumb flat. There's no way you could even read it. But even I think a couple of those, maybe two or three of the intersections, might help to slow the traffic down. Because there's been times I walk out in that street or go to cross that street, and I think I've got all kinds of time, and they're on top of me in a heartbeat. These guys, they work their butts off doing what they can, but they can't be there all the time. So, that was my main concern. That's why I come over this year. Thank you.
So I had a few things that we are working on, and we're working with CDOT to, they're looking at some different scenarios with the Main Street and trying to get the crosswalks so they are more recognizable to people that are traveling through Rangeley. The stoplight was not feasible to replace.
Well, I know the story on that.
Okay.
You know.
But the town is working together with CDOT to try to make it more pedestrian-friendly, and that's to come. I don't think there's any final plans on that, but we are working on it. And it is something of concern, because you can go to the pedestrian crosswalks in town, and you'll see people blasting by there when people are standing on the corner. So it is a concern.
Yeah.
That we are looking at.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Changes the agenda. Lisa, can we add item H, CNCC Flight Team? Please?
Yes.
Or Mary Bill, I guess. We don't have any public hearings, committee or board meetings?
We had an IDA/ADC meeting, and Dent Fisk just came and gave us an update on the DAR group, and they had presented, I believe it was a five-year plan. They had, it was very short, but it was very concise and kind of focused more on recognizing some of the sites for the Indian Drines and how to get to them, and they wanted to do improvements for some of them that the BLM doesn't allow us to go towards. And I think there was even brought up, and some of you that do the four-wheeling know that you're not allowed to stop at when they're doing some of the trail rides. And so, they talked about trying to, you know, talk to BLM about how that could change so that possibly people can stop. I think their concern is that they're afraid somebody's going to run over them and tear it up, which I don't think any of the riders would do. I think they're just more interested in looking at them. And they had a lot of good information in there, and I'll forward that to you, just if you would like to see it. But they had some other ideas about how to improve the different landmarks and just make improvements to try and bring more people to see those features in our area, more archaeological-type improvements. So, it was a really good presentation. And then we just talked about some more of our loans and how the IDA/ADC is going to move forward with trying to help businesses in Rangeley. So, it was a good discussion.
And then Lisa, on the drop of a dime, went to the AGNC meeting for me. I ended up having to work, so.
Well, after Connie, I also went on Monday to testify, and we got home about ten-thirty-eleven, which of course, I don't think did anything good-wise. They always leave a red junction group for last, which I think is very intentional, to try and see how many of us leave, you know? But there was a good group there, and I think Jeff Rechter was there, Bonnie Peterson, and the Garfield County Commissioner, I can't remember Paul Herning. You might.
Herning?
Yeah, do you remember?
Garfield County Commissioner?
I believe.
No, that's probably their aide. I can't think of her name.
But anyway, there was a good group there to testify. Connie and I ended up testifying with some proponents for it, so that was interesting. But the AGNC meeting was really good, too, because they had a couple guys present on the water, real water. And Scott Tipton was there. It was a really good meeting, and he should have probably been there. It would have been more beneficial for him, I should say. He shouldn't have to be there. But it was a really good meeting, so I did enjoy going. So, those are very good. I think it's in Rangeley next month.
It's.
So if anybody's interested in attending, they're really informative meetings. And I think that's all we've had since the last meeting.
Any reports from council?
I'll jump in on this one, just say that I reached out to Senator Rankin last Thursday or Friday, somewhere in there, and he, basically, I was just saying thanks for fighting. I don't know if you guys saw what was going on with the Senate Bill one-eight-one and all that, but basically, the Joint Budget Committee went to Paulus and said, here's your budget, but we're not doing all-day kindergarten, because you're trying to cut all the funding through Senate Bill one-eight-one, or you're cutting your own funding through Senate Bill one-eight-one. So I reached out and said thanks to him, and he asked me, when is a good time to come to Rangeley? He wants to make a trip up here, so if there's an event or something like that you guys can think of that would be good for him, let me know, or at least one of us will reach out to him and see if he'll come up for it.
What about like one of the networking meetings? No?
Maybe. I mean, that's definitely a possibility.
That's hard for you guys to attend, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, I was thinking something along those lines, where he can hit as many community members as possible, so that would be definitely an option. But, yeah, so it just brings from a little bit. He did say the summer, so if you can come up with anything. He doesn't make a whole lot of trips up here, so if we can get him, that'd be fantastic.
Yes, I'm on.
That's all.
Anybody else? Supervisor reports.
Good evening. I wanted to talk about the crosswalk crossings, since Ed came in and raised a concern. I just want you guys to know that we treat that the same as we do school bus stop signs. If you run a school bus stop sign in the town of Rangeley and we catch you, or somebody calls you and you get a ticket. If we catch somebody in a crosswalk and cars aren't stopping, we're going to stop and do the same thing. That's what they're designed for, but unfortunately, I believe Ed's complaint is valid. We have those issues. People aren't stopping when they're supposed to be stopping at the crosswalks. But I just want you to know that we are enforcing that when we see it. It's just unfortunate, or just like Ed said, we can't be there all the time, and we could be in one place for the, or the right place one time and the wrong place the next time. But we do take that seriously, and I do think it's an issue as well with nothing stopping traffic coming through on Main Street. That being said, I was asked by Lisa to weigh in on a couple of issues. One was the recreational marijuana, and specifically, I was asked to kind of do a pros and cons list. I reached out to Sam Stewart, who is the Chief of Police for Parachute PD. As you guys may know, parachute's very similar to us. They're oil and gas. They were hit very hard by the downside of the economy. So I reached out to him, wondering, because population size, they're a little bit more, but same-sized department, a lot of similarities there. So I reached out to him and kind of was asking, what's the pros and cons? And so I'm just going to give you what he gave me, and I wanted to add on to that just a little bit. So some of his pros were no effect on the way law enforcement and the way the marijuana store actually operates. They comply with all state and federal limitations. He said that, and this is an approximate, twenty to thirty percent of the town's annual budget comes from those dispensaries that are in his area. The companies are great to work with. They have great security and buildings, because they're required to have a certain amount of security there, so they're not rundown buildings. They are new and with good security cameras. And then he said that the companies donate money and time to make the community better. They understand that they're making money, and they're trying to put some of that back into the community. So that's some of the pros that he listed for me. Some of the cons that he listed were increased homeless population, but keeping in mind, they're off I-70, so we've never really had a homeless situation up here, especially with as cold as it gets. He did say increased drug-related crime, specifically DUIs, DUIDs, which is driving under the influence of drugs. Increased access for children to have, he said that they've noticed this, and he believes this as well, that when you saturate a community and make marijuana readily accessible to anybody, it's easier for them to give it to a younger brother or sister or a cousin or whatever. It's just easier to get it out amongst the community. And then the other con that he listed was, most of those franchises are not locally owned. They're owned from somewhere else by somebody else, so it's not somebody within the community that owns these companies. The other thing that he felt like we should know is that he believes that there should be a town vote if recreational marijuana was to be discussed again. He thinks the community should really look into that and make a decision as a community. Those were his thoughts on it, and I agree with that. My biggest concern, without a doubt, is making it easier for kids. There's no doubt that we have marijuana in our community, just like the other drugs. And I would argue that marijuana even right now is easier to get than alcohol. It's easier to conceal. And I would argue that marijuana even right now is easier to get than alcohol. It's easier to conceal. But my biggest concern about bringing in recreational or medical marijuana to our community is how much easier is it gonna be for somebody who normally wouldn't have access to have it? We know that some of these people are going to dispensaries, purchasing it legally and coming back and selling it because it's easy for them to split up and sell to kids. We know that's happening. And my big concern is if we had one closer or in our community, how much more of a problem is that gonna be? And how's that gonna affect our youth? So moving on. We, my last report I had that we were gonna enforce, this kind of goes on with the crosswalk situation. We dug out our old speed trailer. I don't know if you guys saw that while it was up for a little bit. Unfortunately, what we found out, that was a 2003 trailer. We had Public Works, they did a heck of a job rewiring it, painting it. Then we put it up and it doesn't work. The tech, not the radar technology there is out of date. If any of you guys drove by it while it was up, it probably worked one out of the three or five times that you went by it. That is something that while I've been an officer here, we've never really used. I thought this was a great opportunity to bring it back out, especially as the snow was melting and people are going a little bit quicker, put them in the school zones. It's just unfortunately that ended up not working out. I did look into the cost to upgrading or fixing it and it's more cost-effective just to purchasing a trailer. That's something that I'm looking into at this time for grants and things like that, because that's gonna be pretty expensive. But I do believe that our community would benefit from a mobile speed trailer that we can put in different areas. I get complaints all the time from community members saying that on South Stanlin, River Road, South White, East Rangeley, that they have people speeding up and down. And I think a flashing reminder will help people slow down. So that's something that I, I put in the last one. We did use it for the two weeks, but when we realized it wasn't good, it wasn't working consistently, we went ahead and pulled it back down. There's just nothing we can do with it. When I started looking for parts to fix it, I found out all the other agencies that have the same trailer are selling theirs. So we don't wanna throw good money behind a bad problem there.
Ty, what's, what's the new one cost?
Between $7,000 to $15,000 depending on how you want it, how top-notch you wanna get.
We proved it for the budget, didn't we?
We talked about signs and I'll talk to Jeff about that. I was gonna talk to him today because.
Oh, was it just the signs on each end of town?
Right, right. And Ty and I discussed that too. I just haven't had a chance to talk to Jeff about where he's at with the signs. Because when Ed called, I did talk to him about CDOT and the bump outs. And Ty and I discussed that it would be really helpful, especially at the crosswalks, to have just the signs that flash your speed. Because those are a really good reminder. I mean, I know I see them and I see them and I'm like, you know.
Like the one in Maker?
Yeah.
So does, when we're putting up a sign like that on the, on the state highway like that, do we have regulations that we have to follow?
Yes, on 64, but like River Road where the one sign is, and it was, I thought like a, but it's never worked. It was a, it has the technology, but we haven't kept it. And I don't know if that was the school district or I don't think it was our responsibility. But on 64, we do have to have CDOT's permission. But they acted like they would be very willing to let us do that. We just have to make sure that we follow their guidelines and especially where the crosswalks are, because that's the whole purpose of doing the bump outs and the crosswalks, because we lost the light to try and slow traffic down. And also when we get on later to the university technical assistance, they're also the ones that talked about the roadmap on 64 to do the striping, because they've proven that if you have, you know, smaller lanes, people tend to slow down too. It might not be a lot, but it's, it's a little bit of a deterrent. So we were gonna ask them about that and just see what the patterns were and stuff. Because CDOT said they would do the striping. So there's some other options as well. But I, I will talk to Jeff about that. He just wasn't in today.
Does that trailer that you're talking about, is it also, you know, is like a speed cameras or anything like that? Or is it just show speed and flashers the car coming? Or is there?
The ones we're looking at are, and I believe that that technology is out there, but for us, we're just looking for ones that'll flash and say, hey, slow down, you're going too fast. Personally, I don't know if the community would be very happy if we had one of those cameras up there taking their picture when they're speeding. But to add on that.
I paid a few tickets from those. And I mean, I was, I was wrong, you know, I got into a spot where I was, I didn't know the speed limit and I was going over it and I paid my ticket, you know. But I mean, when people are trying to cross that road on a wheelchair or other, you know, we gotta do what we can to protect it.
100% agree. And I think the benefit of a speed trailer is, I think these signs are a great idea. But if there's some way we can work out a speed trailer, then we can move it in other parts of town so they don't, people on these side streets don't feel like they're being left out. You know, because they're our side streets where the kids are playing. They're crossing Main Street just the same. But I mean, they've got their basketball hoops up, they got their bicycles and we wanna try to get them to slow down. If we can educate people before it gets to the point where something bad happens, I'd much rather do that.
I, I would say I agree with that. I think it'd be better to get a mobile one than put a permanent one. So that way you can move it around.
I think it'd be nice on the crosswalks. I think Wade in here too. I think the crosswalk ones would be really good with the flashing speed. And then the mobile one is nice to move around because we can't get cover every road and I think it's good to kind of move it around.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just gonna add about the pedestrian signs. I think we've all been to Grand Junction around Mesa University and their pedestrian signs there. They've done a heck of a job over the years upgrading that to the point where pedestrians are crossing that crosswalk on 12th Street. You notice it and you notice it from a distance back. I don't know if we have the funds to get to that point, but if we can do that, especially because we lost our stop sign and people are just zooming through. Some people won't even see the change from, they're doing 65 past the lake and they all do 65 through town because they don't pay attention to that. And like I said, we can't be everywhere. So anything we can do to slow them down, I think is a benefit.
So I'm with you 100% on that. I actually, when we had CDOT up here, asked them on 12th Street in Junction if that's something we can do, is build something like that. And they said, they told us that there's more accidents on those kind than there are the ones that they have out here. So they said more people are getting hit there than off the style we have here, which didn't make sense to me. And I don't know if I 100% buy it, but that's for a minute. The other thing I was gonna say is, do we need to do something simpler to try to educate people? Because I was driving by and I had to pull over and tell the gal, no, you have to go across if you're standing in the crosswalk. You have the right of way.
Well, but they're also hesitant because.
Right, and I get that, so.
People are like coming at you.
No, so what I'm saying though is, is there something we can do to better, better educate the people? Like, I mean, door flyers, put them out and I don't, I don't know if the mailer would be something good like that, but to try to educate the public to say, hey, look, you have to stop.
How to actually use a crosswalk.
You have to stop at a crosswalk if there's somebody in it. I'm saying both ways, right? Like, so the people know, like, hey, they have to stop for me, but.
I think the best deterrent is like when Ty and the officers sit there and pull people over, that gets the most attention.
I think it helps, but I don't think.
It's not always like he's saying, it's not always the, the car drivers, it's the people trying to cross that don't use it right that create the confusion, you know?
Well, yeah, because with that given set, you're not gonna.
I, I'm just saying, I guess that, that we know the state project's gonna be a while before that actually happens, because it's the state of Colorado. But if, so if we can do. If, if we could put something out now that says, hey, just a reminder, I don't know if you wanna do newspaper, something along those lines.
You could paint a yellow box on the, on the sidewalk and if you're standing in it, that means you're attempting to cross.
I, I mean, Facebook might be an avenue too. I know you guys have been trying to keep up on that, put that out there to where, just, just to say, hey, it is state law in Colorado that if there's a person in the crosswalk, you yield to them, period. I, I, I just, I don't think a lot of people realize that. I think they just don't pay attention and go.
Well, I think it's just like everything else. We've never had them there or, you know, so people are not accustomed to paying attention.
That's true.
You know, and I don't wanna say, because I actually missed one one time, because it's dark on that corner when it starts to get late. It's hard to see someone coming up that street, because it's really dark there. I didn't see them because it was night.
By the post office?
Yes, coming from the opposite side by the Old Sinclair. It's dark there. So I don't know if you could, we could light it up better. Because like I said, I didn't ever saw them until I got beside them, because it was dark.
I know that, that sign that he was talking about out by the memorial, is that, I believe that's the one he's talking about. It gets flat. I picked it up. I've stopped and picked it up twice myself. So do we have more of those, maybe some larger?
And they're plowing, it's just dark.
Well, I mean, yeah, they have to be removed when you're plowing, but do we have any, who provides those? Is it the town or does the PD have them or who has those?
Didn't the state provide those, that first round?
They did. And the one you're talking about is South Stanlin. That thing, it gets put back in the middle of the road and that thing's been run over more than anything in this town. But I think it's a good thing and it's a bad thing, because when they run it over, I think people learn from that and then they're like, oh man, that could have been somebody. But the problem is, people aren't seeing it.
Maybe we oughta put one up that looks like a person.
Truthfully. Truthfully though, that, that intersection, that crosswalk is a horrible place. Because where you're coming out from the rec center and the way you're trying to watch traffic as you go, like I've done it before, where I've just looked down and I'm like, oh, it's right there. Like, you know it's there, but you're paying attention to traffic.
And also people are coming into town, which they're already going faster than you would hopefully down Main Street.
So maybe worth consideration to move that up. I guess you can't, because that's where the sidewalk comes out, huh? That's why it's there.
Yeah, that's the shortest place to get across that street. And that's part of the problem that Ed is, you know, saying to get across Main Street is a big, long, I mean, even if you're walking, it, I'm like sometimes, I'm gonna be in the middle probably.
Are all these being addressed by the state with the bump outs and all that?
There's only gonna be two bump outs and then we, you know, like Sid are gonna try and get flashing signs at each of the crosswalks. And I do think the lights would help a little bit. I mean.
Back to what I said, I agree with him. Like the ones at Mesa, because you have to, they don't flash until somebody pushes the button. And that's what doesn't make sense when they're like, oh, that doesn't, there are more accidents. I'm like, what?
It's because they press them, they just press the button and jump out in the road and you're like, holy crap.
That is kinda true, but, yeah. But, I mean, I think that's a good way to, that would be my preference personally.
I would say too, because it would go both ways. They have promotes, whatever, so it'll hit both ways. When it's going on, I would suggest that. That's my, to where we can, you get the trailer also.
Well, I agree. I think the flashing lights, when they're going across, will do the best to be a visual deterrent for people. And then I, I just think that a mobile speed trailer would be beneficial to the whole community, not just our Main Street. Because it's the kids that we're worried about running out in front of the road.
And if we can do something like that, Lisa, I know they came up here and looked at those bump outs or whatever.
Even if we can get signs up now.
Yeah.
And then if they redo them, I mean.
Oh, we can move forward on that, but it's a process too.
Yeah.
We won't, in the right way, but yeah.
I mean, if we can get the drainages and stuff like that fixed, I know our Public Works Department is gonna have a real issue with those bump outs. The way that they're doing it. And we have to, we have to, we have to plow and maintain that road. And it's gonna be, those guys are gonna have to do it. So their consideration, if, if these crosswalk things will work, that's the whole purpose, right, is to get people to slow down? And if that works, then I, and, and putting the stripes, you know, the yellows lines.
I mean, we've had several meetings with CDOT and I mean, you know, Jeff's weighed in, of course, too. But so far we were still moving forward with that. And Jeff said, you know, they just have to try and, you know, it's not gonna be easy, but it won't, with just two, it's not gonna completely mess up their day, but it isn't gonna make it easy at all.
And I don't know how you feel about these, but like downtown Salt Lake, they have the crosswalks, but you pick the flag up out of there. I don't know how long they'd actually last before someone took them or if they wanted to, but that's relatively cheap. But it's also something, you know, you walk across the street waving a flag, you're gonna be seen. They're big orange foot-by-foot square flags that when you cross the crosswalk, you're, they're just sitting in the bucket. There's a bucket on each side of the road and you just pull it out and you can carry it. And like I said, I don't know how long they last, I don't know how well they actually work, but they are downtown Salt Lake.
Probably a lot of discussion. Like I said, myself, if I've seen, because I've seen people by the post office getting ready, but I didn't know if they were crossing and, you know, everybody was slowing down and then when they weren't going, they went on through and sped up.
Well, and I've stopped and then the other.
If they were in a designated area.
It's like, so it's confused. I mean, if I'm a pedestrian, I'm gonna be standing there waiting to see.
Well, and that's what I'm wondering if, you know, even if right now all we do is like this cheap little marker flaggers. That way if you pick one up and that guy's holding it, you know he's crossing the road. And then, like I said, I don't know how effective they really are, but it'd be something.
My concern on that would only be, I, I know exactly what you're talking about. I was in Salt Lake a month ago and saw those for the very first time and I thought they were very unique. But how long would it take us to educate the public of Rangeley that that's what they're there for? That would be my concern. But I, I'm agreeing. So I think that if we start with bare minimum Facebook and things like that and put stuff out there, this is proper crosswalk etiquette. If you're in the crosswalk, you need to cross the street. And if you are driving and somebody's in the crosswalk, you need to stop. I think just trying to educate people, I think would be a good first start for us, regardless of if we do signs or, or flags or anything else. So that's something that we can address from the police department's side immediately. Get that out in the next week or so.
I was just gonna mention too, you, you said grants. Have you looked into USDA at all? I know they have some rural grants for police department stuff, so I'll, I'll try to get in touch with you on that.
Perfect. I have not looked into them yet, but I'd be more than willing to, to jump on that.
I've got information on that too, Andy.
So I just have a, a couple more topics. I just wanted to let you guys know a couple of the things that Rangeley Police Department's gonna be assisting with. The health fair, the children's health fair next week. We were invited over to discuss this, you know, just be there, show a presence, discuss with little kids, hand out books and stuff like that, a good public relation thing. We ended up making that not just a Rangeley Police Department event, we've now made that a Town of Rangeley event where we have people from all different departments within the Town of Rangeley that have volunteered their time. And we're gonna be there and we're just gonna do a meet and greet with the public while they're, they're doing their health fair things. We're gonna give out coloring books and we'll have, you know, cop cars down there, we'll have stickers and we'll just talk to them and kind of introduce them to the Town of Rangeley as a whole. We've got members from every department within the Town of Rangeley represented there during the, the public health fair. We're also, the Rangeley Police Department will be assisting the high school with a mock accident on April 1st. We will be doing a, a little guest speaking, talking about seat belts. And then we will be assisting as well with the accident that's gonna happen after the fact. That being said, we're also this year, just the same as every last year, we're, we're gonna assist with Rowdy Worm. We're gonna provide PBTs, the preliminary breath test when the kids come in. And then we're also, just like last year, we stayed and we put on a obstacle course with our pedal car and our drunk goggles. It's kind of a fun event, but it also is educational to show these teenagers that while they are wearing these goggles designed to show them what it's like to be impaired, that they can operate a pedal car correctly, let alone a motor vehicle. We did that last year. It was a huge success. We were asked back again this year to do the same thing and we're gonna do that on April 13th. Also on a personnel note, Officer Leach will be getting off FTO this Friday, so starting next week, you will see him out on solo patrol. His FTO has been really good and he's, he's gonna be a good officer for us. Really excited to have him out on his own. The last two things I have for you is the CNCC MOUs, Memorandum of Understanding. If you guys have all had a chance to look at that, we were approached by CNCC. This is an MOU that they have in place with the Craig Police Department. We looked at it. What it was designed for was to strengthen our relationship with CNCC. There's some defining language in there. It designates who our contact person is. If we have an issue there, is it the police department? And vice versa, what our role is for the college if they need us. I've gone through it. We worked with it with Dan Wilson. Trevor Sperry's here. He's gonna introduce himself here in just a moment. He's the Safe Campus Coordinator for the college. We've been working closely on these things. I, I really like the way it's done, because I think it eliminates any guesswork. It says that the college is gonna assist us if we're up there and then we're gonna assist the college in what our parameters are and what we're gonna do. I don't know how long it's been in place with Craig PD, but I've heard nothing but good things about it. So that was something that we were approached, we looked at, and I think it's a good idea. The other thing with CNCC is we have a human trafficking trailer. I believe you guys have the handouts. This was something that is coming to our area. I'm not sure who brought it in, if it was Moffett County or if it was Meeker, but they got online first. They reached out to us and asked us if we were interested in having the trailer in our community as well. This is something that I don't think people realize is such a huge problem within all the communities in, in the United States. And they target young people. If you look at some of the, the information there, the average. And they target young people, if you look at some of the, the information there, the average, um, age of somebody that's sold into sexual exploitation is between 12 and 14 years. But a big part of what this is, is they go after, um, the youth, and that includes college age, and even older, through social media and online presence, they find out what they like, where they're gonna be, who their friends are, and they basically cyberstalk them, and use that as a way to abduct them later on. I think you've all seen stuff in the news about people being kidnapped, and sold in, or kept as slaves, and then, you know, they get, they don't go free for four or five years, or longer than that. I mean, Elizabeth Smart in, in Utah, that's a well-known one. This, uh, human trafficking trailer, their point is to come out and educate our, our youth, and educate the public as well. What we have currently set up is that they'll be at the, uh, high school, and we're gonna put all the middle schoolers through high school, through the trailer, uh, through all the education, it's about what to look for, and how to, uh, keep yourself safe, but it's also, if you meet somebody, and they're showing signs and symptoms of being a victim themselves, recognizing that, and saying something. A lot of these people that are saved out of this business is just for that, somebody recognizes the signs and symptoms of somebody who's part of this, and they do something about it. And so this human trafficking trailer and educational tool's gonna help our community stay safe, and to, um, recognize that, maybe help somebody else that. So we have it at the high school one day, what we're looking to do is fund for a second day, and put the trailer up at CNCC. Um, I've spoken with Trevor, and he's spoken to the, the president, the vice president, and they're excited about having that up there, given that, you know, our college students are targets as well. Um, especially, you know, a lot of them come from inner cities, and that's where they're gonna go back to on breaks, and that's where they're gonna go home during, you know, summertime. Uh, I think bringing it up and having it dedicated to CNCC one day would be very beneficial, because of all the students that they have, but we would still make that open to parents and the public as well, they'd be open for, uh, parents and public both days. That way, if you couldn't make it the first day, you can make it the second day. And I think that if we start advertising, I know that Meeker, uh, because it's gonna be at the Meeker, um, Health Fair, I believe is what it is, they're gonna advertise in the newspaper, and if we get all of our funding in line, we're gonna jump right in with them. Uh, we've had great contacts with Nancy Amick and some others out of Meeker that are excited to help us out, they've, uh, offered their assistance in any which way we can to bring this trailer to our community, to the recent knowledge, I don't think we've ever had anything like this come here. Um, and it's one of those things, because we're so remote, it's easy to kind of just forget about, and pretend it doesn't happen here, but this could happen here, and this could happen to our kids, um, when they're playing softball out of town. You know, they can get scooped up and things like that, or any other sport. So I think it's good for us to educate our public, uh, to keep our kids safe.
So seven hundred dollars a day, is that what it costs, Ty?
Yeah, the original cost was a thousand dollars, but since they're being in the town already, uh, they've given us that discounted rate. And that is, um, to keep, because they have a staff of four, they have lodgings, gas, all that stuff, that's what that cost goes into, is to allow them to travel around. But once they come to an area, they typically offer discounts, because they're already here. So they're gonna be in Meeker, they're gonna come to, we're trying to get them to come here for two days, and then they're gonna go to Moffitt for two days, and then I don't know where they're going after that.
I think it would be a good thing to have it down on Main Street somewhere. I mean, because the parents are probably the ones that are gonna see and be able to recognize some of those signs. I don't know if that's something that could be talked into them, maybe a five to eight, or five to seven, or something like that?
They have, they've been more than willing to do anything that we have asked them to do, I've asked them, like, how, how much time do we get for this? Seven hundred dollars, he's like, I'll give you as much time as you need. So if we wanted him to be up at the college for several hours, and then we want him right on Main Street, if I can find a business willing to put him out, they'll do that for us. They're very excited about coming and spreading the word, so we just gotta find a, a place that's willing to, to host them, essentially.
I'm sure the chamber might be...
But, uh, the schools wanted to, are wanting to advertise, you know, through their mailers, their call homes, and all that stuff. The paper wants to advertise it, we can do social media. I think that if we really get those word out, that this trailer that never comes here is gonna be here for two days, and give people the most opportunity to come, I think that they will. And I, and I agree, if we put it on Main Street, where you're driving by to get gas, and you see it, you may just stop in, just because you saw it. But I, I just really would like us to bring it here, and I would like to maximize, uh, the, the time that it's here, and how many people will see it and go through it. And if you don't, so that's all that I have, you have no questions for me? I want, uh, Trevor Sperry here, he's gonna stand up, and he's gonna introduce himself, and, and kind of tell you a little bit about himself.
Okay. Thanks, Ty.
Good evening, um, like you said, uh, my name is Trevor Sperry. Uh, I appreciate Officer Hamblin inviting me to, to attend tonight. Uh, my wife and I, and my, our son moved here in November, so pretty recently, from central Utah. Uh, I accepted the job as their Safe Campus Coordinator up at CNCC, and as, we work in Craig as well. Uh, I try and go out there about once a week. Uh, and it's, it's been a great experience, there wasn't much established when I got here, as far as safety and security goes, so it's been kind of neat to start from scratch, and, and kind of learn as I go, and, and work with resources that I have, not only on the campus, but also here in this room. Um, and, and it's been great to establish MOUs, um, to open up that open communication, um, and, and define the duties and responsibilities that each, each unit has. Um, it's been great to work with, uh, Andy in the Fire Department, Lisa and Officer Hamblin and the Police Department. Um, we've, uh, we're working on holding some fire drills for the residence halls up in the, up at, on campus. Last week, we had an active shooter drill training, and we involved, uh, the Rangelley Police Department, and it was a great success, had, uh, close to fifty people in attendance there. Uh, and then on Saturday, we're having the Red Cross come, and we're gonna work on establishing CNCC as a shelter to the community, uh, in the case of a disaster, uh, President Granger is on board with that, and he's excited. But we're, we're happy to be here, my family and I, and, and, um, love to be involved in the community, so. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Well, welcome to our community.
Thanks.
Any questions for Ty? Don? Mr. Reed?
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. I'll try to make it brief. In your packet, you knew that, uh, part of our budget, we were doing our due diligence with our collection system again this year, and it was slated to be budgeted, we got the initial engineering grant, um, so just kind of wanted to touch base on that. It included several projects that we were doing, uh, the main one that we're doing is for the collection system. Um, that grant, the rest of that is slated and ready to go, our deadline's, I believe, April 1st, so we'll be submitting that for the working part of the collection system, for the upgrade that we were doing the manholes this year. Um, the rest of the engineering on some of the projects were for wastewater. Um, we're researching and doing a lot of our homework, on what we think is the best course to do for the new Edworks building, and the sludge collection system that we're slated for the wastewater. So it's kind of on hold now, we'll be working with that a little bit later on. The manholes that we'll be working on this year, we have six manholes, two are our primary ones on our main transit lines that go across sixty-four, and, uh, we've got some wiggle room on our grant, so, you know, we kind of based it on the linear footage that we'd have to do with each manhole, so we purchased some extra materials that we had left over from last year, so hopefully we can get four or five other manholes besides the two primary ones that we're doing.
Are you using the guys out of Meeker again?
Yep. Yeah, we, um, I don't think anybody would be able to beat their bit, I mean, they were pretty reasonable. These guys were flexible, and that's, because we've got some unforeseen items when we're doing the manholes, and these guys were really good at accommodating what we needed to get our grades back, and get them taken care of, so. Looks like that will be probably late, or late summer, early fall, we'll be doing manhole repairs. Any questions? That part? Okay. You guys knew that we had some issues with our warranty with our sludge collector. Lisa, Jocelyn, and myself, we put together a pretty strongly worded document, and shipped it off to all parties that were involved with the warranty issue that we're having. We got actually a really good response, um, everybody kind of came to the table, and now we're working on negotiating with them. Um, one of the things we were looking at is, we wanted to get away from having hoodies, so we'll go with stainless steel on this. We're not gonna get out of this a little unscathed, but we think for the most part, we're gonna reach a resolution. Things will work out on that end. And I'm kind of hoping if we go to stainless steel, this may help us in our corrosion endeavor. If we have to go down that road, that might help reduce our costs there, too. So, and we're still currently waiting on, that study should be back in here any day now, but I'll update you as we go. Other than that, we've got a lot of projects going on, uh, raw water system, we'll be activating that next week. DOW approached me today, they wanna stock the ponds next Wednesday, so we will have the irrigation ponds up and running by next Wednesday, and then deadline is usually April fifteenth, when we start the raw water system. And then the department will be working next week, starting on cleaning up the stormwater drains. Other than that, that's all I got for you.
Great.
Thanks, Don.
Okay.
Lisa?
I put a few papers in front of you, as Don said, we got our award for the administrative grant to do the planning for those projects, and that came through today. We'll start our summer hours on April 1st, and initially, just tentatively, we're gonna try and do the business office as well. So that will start on April 1st, and most departments go through October thirty-first, I doubt the business office will go that long. We'll probably stop at least a month early. Um, and so, like I said, that's just tentative, and see how it goes, and make sure we don't have any issues for the business office to be closed on Friday as well. Um, also, um, Linda's put together a vaccine clinic that will happen on April twenty-seventh, and we'll be putting that in our utility billing, and also on Facebook, so everyone will see that. I believe it's gonna be at the fire hall again this year. Michaela at the county did let me know that the strength in the economics in the West, we were awarded that, and, and, as she, I don't know if she did it either, but the motels will be all paid for, so both the Lisa town managers in Robenko County will be going along with, uh, three other representatives from the county. Peter said that he and Caitlin went to this probably about four years ago, and he said it was a really good, um, experience to go through the exercises, and he felt it was very worthwhile, so I'm really optimistic about that. And I, Tyson wasn't able to go to the oil and gas forum, so I went ahead and signed up, and I also got another scholarship, go after all the scholarships, so it's a freebie other than my time. So I'll go and attend that, and just make sure they know that we're supporting them, and, you know, make a few contacts if we can. And then finally, and this is maybe what we can also do with the crosswalks, it's, Janet and I talked about enforcement, and sometimes, you know, people feel really, like, targeted when we start doing code enforcement, so we're gonna try and start doing things by encouraging them to do compliance first. And instead of sending it in the utility billing, a lot of people just ignore that. Um, Janet's gonna go through different neighborhoods and put door hangers, and just encourage people to start doing the things that we're getting complaints about, so this is gonna be our first one that we start on, barking dogs, and parking with the flow of traffic, not parking on the sidewalks, we had a lot of complaints during the winter, just because a lot of the sidewalks were covered in snow, and some of them that weren't, people parked their vehicles halfway on, so then we've got people walking in the street, and... So, like I said, we're just gonna try and encourage people to start compliance voluntarily, before Janet has to, you know, issue a citation. But we can do that with the crosswalks as well, but we can also get something in utility billing this time, and also, all of these can be posted on Facebook periodically, I don't wanna do it all at one time, because then they don't get any good coverage. Um, Public Works, as Don said, they're gonna be doing stormwater management, Public Works is trying to sweep the dirt into the stormwater, so... Trying to, you know, clean up Main Street first, and hopefully we'll get our new street sweeper in May, I believe, but they've got the old one up and running, and even though it may look like he's throwing dust around, he does get a lot of the dirt up off of Main Street. Gas Department's gonna start their meter rotation, and they're, you know, um, helping out the other departments as needed. Um, and of course, Janet's gonna start code enforcement, and also start with ordering the flowers, and sprucing up things. And then, as we'll go to it, too, we're gonna start working and apply for the University Technical Assistance Grant, so we can start some planning for our Main Street project, and working with the chamber on that. So we're just gearing up for all the summertime projects, and I will be talking to Jeff about the signs, and if we can get those going before... Like I said, CDOT claims they're gonna be here this summer, but we can definitely get the signs up, because they're gonna also do some pans on the different sidewalks in town, to have a little better accessibility for people like Ed that, you know, need the downslope, because some of our sidewalks are fairly steep, they're not in very good shape. And I think Jeff has a few off of Main Street, too, that he's gonna try and get fixed, but aren't doing it very well, so... Other than that, I can't think of anything. Do you guys have any questions, or any, and you might want to address?
I have a question on the vaccine clinic, is Ashley Valley doing this independently, or are we like the sponsor of this at all?
They come over and do it, because they get the money for the clinic, and they just do it to help the shelter out, because, uh, shelter doesn't get any money from it, but just to try and encourage people to get their pets vaccinated, because a lot of people, they have to drive anywhere, and won't get it done. So they just do it to, you know, pay for the shots, but there's no funds put into it or anything.
Thanks.
Great, thanks, Lisa.
No old business, new business, discussion in action to approve the February two thousand nineteen financials. Lisa, is it just because we don't have the, um, looking at the revenue over expenditures in the general fund?
That won't even out till August, we'll be in federal, and then release funds.
Okay.
And property tax comes in at Spurts, probably in June, we'll get a higher percentage, too, so it'll probably be in the hole until August, September. And Don's just not making enough water yet, so it's summertime, he'll give me enough, too. A lot of times in January and February is when they order their, you know, yearly things, too, to stock up, so it, it doesn't look too good, you know, there's never an even amount, but Don will probably start evening out here pretty quick, as soon as the gas starts blowing off.
Probably not gonna have the water for a while, though, Don. Any other questions on the financials?
Nope, I'll make a motion to approve the February two thousand nineteen financials.
Second. Motion by Andy, second by Luke, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I to B, discussion in action to approve the application for a ready grant, which will create an economic, economic development plan for Rangelley, Colorado, with no matching costs to the Town of Rangelley.
So, the reason that I think it's important to approve is we obviously have the Better Cities, um, Plan, and we had a stronger grant, I believe that's what it was called. Well, all of those items, and we talked about this at the RDA meeting, I don't feel like any of those are very relevant now, and the things that we tried, other than some of the programs at CNCC, which I do think will come to fruition, I don't think we're gonna accomplish, and some, so what you do in this grant, you notice there's like four different, um, organizations that are outlined here, and you choose which ones you would like to work with. And, and talking to Patty Stodden, who is the Director of USDA, she thought it would be really good to, um, choose like the Rural Community Assistance Partnership, because they look for ways... for ways to improve your economy within your community, which I think is a lot better idea for us, because even if you look at like Grand Junction, a lot of storefronts are closing. I don't know how many stores we're gonna get to Rangel, there's a few I would really like to work on, but I think we've gotta look within our community and see how we can, you know, build our community to be stronger economically within ourselves, and hopefully that would spurn other things outside of the community. I think Connie does a great job of bringing in a lot of the outdoor rec, and Jocelyn has some good ideas based on, you know, that study that was done that we're gonna work on as well. But I think if we're gonna do it, we're gonna have to start within our own community and build on those things. We did have another four-wheel outfitter that wants to fly into the airport and do two-hour and half-day tours, 'cause Aspen and Sokris and them are kicking him out of their area, so he's ready to come somewhere where people are a little more friendly to what they wanna do. So, I feel like those are the kinds of things that will help us grow, is to really encourage people that wanna come here and, you know, enjoy what we have to offer, so that's kind of what that is about. But it isn't, you know, for money, they come in and you have to get a group of people together, and that means business people, the directors of like the special, of all of our community, and they have to come in and put the work in. And so, I'm going to go after everybody to help everyone participate, 'cause it's our community, it's not just this group in this room. We've all gotta participate if we want to, you know, grow our community and keep what we do have. And I think that's even more critical now with the state's outlook on oil and gas, you know, we're gonna have to fight for everything that we want to keep, and we hold dear to us.
And the key word is no match.
There's no match.
So, having said that, I will, I am one hundred percent behind doing this. I mean, the only thing you're out is man-hours, man-hours applying for it, right? So, I'll make a motion to approve the application for the ready grant for, in the order you have, I guess maybe I'll let you go over the order you'd put together, but that, I'll make that motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Andy, second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Item C, discussion and action to approve the application for a DOLA universal, University Technical Assistance Grant for Community Development towards design of our Main Street East entrance and downtown improvement, with budget cost totaling ten thousand dollars with a sixty percent match.
And that was budgeted for in our capital in economic development. And like I said, they come in and they basically do a plan for development on Main Street, and we did wanna focus on the east end, where, you know, the rocks have all fallen down, and, and then also just talk about improving our sidewalks. Even though they're in great shape, considering how old they are, they're very narrow, and we would have to do that in like segments, it wouldn't happen quickly, so just kinda identify through that plan how to go about doing that, and just improve walkability, and also probably talk about the Kennedy's walking path, 'cause it's getting pretty
So, six thousand dollars for a plan?
We budgeted ten thousand, so we can spend a little bit more with what we would have to, but we don't, probably won't, based on the scope of work that we've talked with them about.
Will they take any of our in-kind labor?
Um, it's through DOLA, so probably not. If it's through the town, like the AGNC grant that I applied for, they won't do our labor, but since the rec center's gonna use it, they can invoice this, and we can use their labor, but not the person that's applying for the grant. But this is also what the Main Street program wants to see, is that we, it's just like the technical assistance grant that Jocelyn is going for, like wastewater, they want to see that we've got a plan and we're ready to implement things, not just that we're thinking about things. So, that's kind of the purpose of doing this, if we wanna move forward in the Main Street program. And also to improve, you know, when people come into town, what, you know.
So, we'll have a design, a blueprint, basically, at the end of the day?
So, this would provide sixteen thousand for that purpose, with us being responsible for six thousand?
It's a, it's a sixty forty, and we have to have the sixty percent match, but like I said, we budgeted for what we would have to pay for, and then DOLA provides the other, you know, part of the grant. We, we probably won't spend it all, based on our, what we budgeted for, we probably won't spend the full ten thousand.
Well, I mean, you know, looking at the importance of having our community being appealing to those that pass through, to try to get them to stay, I think it's, it's important to dress up Main Street, you know, in any way we can, and it provides for the residents too, you know, to access the sidewalks. So, you know, with that, I, I make a motion that we approve the application for a DOLA University Technical Assistance Grant for Community Development towards a design of our Main Street East entrance and downtown improvement. And the amount totaling ten thousand dollars?
No.
No more than? Not to exceed?
There you go.
I'll second. Motion's made by Matt, second by Trey. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, discussion and action to prove the, approve the application for a, for an EIAF grant for the wastewater manhole project, budgeting total cost of one thousand five, one hundred and five thousand sixty-six dollars with a fifty percent match.
Also budgeted for, correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the EIAF grant for wastewater manhole project, budgeted costs totaling one oh five zero six six with a fifty percent match.
Second. Motion's been made by Andy, second by Trey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item E, discussion and action to approve seven hundred dollars covering, covering an additional day for the human trafficking trailer setup on CNCC campus for students and faculty.
Where are we looking this coming out of, budget-wise?
Would this provide for that, you know, maybe Main Street?
I believe so.
Yeah, I believe we can put it up at the college gym, put it on Main Street. We just gotta find somewhere on Main Street that'll allow us to use it.
Rio Blanco County, Jeff Rector funded the day of the school, the first day.
I think it's a good idea. I think if we get it downtown, I, you know, I would, I would hope that maybe CNCC could kick in a little bit for it, but, but saying that, I also agree, if they bring the thing downtown, and if they're downtown for three hours, and we get a few people to go through it, I feel like it's worth the seven hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the seven hundred dollars for the human trafficking trailer for the CNCC campus slash Main Street. As long as it gets downtown half the time, I got no problem covering it, you know, not necessarily half the time, but for a couple hours.
Motion was made by Trey, second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, discussion and action to approve the memorandum of understanding between CNCC and Rangel Police Department to enhance public safety and the quality of life at CNCC by strengthen, strengthening the working relationship.
The lawyer looked at that, and he's happy with the way everything's written, you're happy with the way everything's grown, and all we gotta do is Ron's gotta sign it, and you gotta sign it?
Well, and also reviewed it.
Yeah, he likes it?
Okay. That was maybe my question. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between CNCC and Rangel Police Department to enhance public safety and the quality of life at CNCC by strengthening the working relationship. I figured you wanted it all.
Second.
Motion's made by Andy, second by Luke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, discussion and review of the ordinance six eighty-two, two thousand thirteen, to prohibit the operation of marijuana cultivi, cultivation facilities, marijuana product manufacturing facilities, marijuana testing facilities, and retail marijuana stores in the town of Rangel.
And so, I just wanna give you some background of why I brought this up. It's been, obviously, almost five years, and I've had probably three retail, people feeling, wanting to know if, you know, we're open to that, and I do think it's just good to revisit this. I, you know, I'm not gonna put in, you know, my personal feelings into it, 'cause I think this is a town and board-related decision, and I just think it's a good time, you should always revisit these kind of things and just talk about them. And I guess I would look for some direction from the council, if you want me to go further and do any surveys, or, or anything further to explore either changing that, or if you just feel you would like to continue and just leave that in place.
You know, I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of marijuana, but I'm a fan of people feeling better, and there are some obvious medicinal purposes for marijuana byproducts and the processing of it. Case in point, CBD oil, I don't know if there's any literature out there to support how good it is, but anecdotally, I get a lot of feedback from people in the community, how much they, it makes, helps with their pain and, and their, their overall function in life, so if there's an opportunity for us to pick out a way to be able to retail that, so our community members don't have to drive to, I guess it's not too sore.
Dinosaur.
But if there's an opportunity to keep that here, and have, and have that be a business here, without selling anything that's gonna have a whole, mind-altering effect, you know, 'cause CBD oil doesn't do that, it's, it's pretty benign from, from that part of the deal.
Well, I thought I read that CVS Pharmacy is carrying those now.
That's awesome.
So, I, I don't know the implications of that, I'd have to do some research, but maybe the pharmacies.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I'll go talk to Mel. Hey, Mel, let's talk.
I like Ty's point that it should be brought to a public vote, you know, not just our decision, I think the community, you know, would, because, you know, we're the one where everybody will have to live with it, right?
Well, and that's my point, if you guys want to go down that path and think about that, is that something we should continue to explore, or?
I, I, I would say, I think we should consider exploring it, and, and the main reason is, if we control it, we, I'm saying, might be getting ahead of myself, because I don't know i- if the public comes in and petitions to get on the ballot to get it approved here, right? Like, I'm sure that we're, we would still have some legal standing in the sense of like how funds are gonna be distributed, what we wanted to do. I- if we're, we're moving this forward, saying this is how we want it to go, and we go before the people with our plan, i- it's what we've built, and, and we've gone through and said this is how, if it's gonna be approved here, we would like it to be this way. You guys can vote on it, so that, that would be my take, is, is, let's try to get maybe...
Do some more research.
Some, some, yeah, like, and maybe this is something we can talk about on, when we do our retreat and stuff, but that, that's my thought, is like, what, what, how, how would you characterize like the, the revenue from, like, where would you want it to go? I mean, first thing in my mind is, in line with what Ty said, was, you, you're gonna bring this in, you have to be putting more money into your police department, it's one hundred percent gonna have to happen, right? So, so how are we gonna allocate the funds? I think that's all stuff that needs to be planned out ahead of time before we put it on the ballot.
If you're even gonna consider it.
Right, right, and I, I think there's a lot of support, I think there's a lot of people against it, I think the other thing is, I, the one thing I would ask is, we don't do anything with this ordinance until it's decided by the people. Like, I don't think we should remove that or do anything with it until a vote has been handled by the people. That's, my, those are my thoughts on it.
I'll just say I smelled marijuana when I got out of my truck in the parking lot, so, you know, unless it was a skunk that went through the parking lot, you know, pretty, pretty sure that somebody was, you know, so it's, it's in town, you know, we can't deny that.
What's the, in, in this ordinance, it goes down, and it says the town council has authority under the following provisions, and it has a bunch of Article twenty, Title twenty-nine CRS. Do you know what all that stuff is saying? Is that, I mean, can we, can we get that? Ty, maybe? Find out what the, what?
Well, and it could've changed since two thousand thirteen, I don't know.
Yeah, I can work on getting that information for you.
That was just the verbiage at the time that I think was seized to create the monetary.
Yeah. Which we do have, but I, I think that's something that, that's gonna be better handled going to the community.
Well, and I don't know if you guys read the paper, Roxy, but the Herald Times is doing, you know, a pretty in-depth study on it, and she happened to be here the other day, so I quizzed her a little about it, and I'll email it to you, but there's a pretty comprehensive study, and it's, it's noted, she said, which she, and Ty already brought this up, that the biggest impact is to the youth, it's just like the e-cigarettes, they have a higher, that's the...
More accessibility.
Yeah, because, you know, they can get to it easier. So, they, they're seeing higher uses in kids from like, you know, thirteen to fifteen and sixteen to twenty than other demographics, so, but, but her article, so, the one that's coming out this week, I mean, they're both really well-researched articles, and I'll go re-mail you that, the link to that study, 'cause it is interesting from what she spoke about when we talked, so. And like I said, this can just be a conversation, I just thought it was good to revisit it, just because I've had, like I said, at least three requests for information.
So, we don't have to give our personal opinions yet?
No. You're welcome to do whatever you like. I, I'm not going to, you know, chime in, 'cause I do, I agree with Andy, I think it's the town that should have the decision-making, so I would vote what I think, just like everyone else, but...
Well, and I guess if, unless...
If that's...
Somebody comes to petitioning to, to do that, I think that's, that's where it comes back into play, but I don't see that anybody's petitioning to get something back in this community.
No, it's just the retailers that have approached.
So, in my opinion, people are happy not having one, or otherwise they'd be putting their name on a petition to get it back into Rangel, right?
That's what I...
I don't know that people in town know that they can petition to get on.
No, they oughta get more involved. I wouldn't argue that. Fill the courtroom again. But Lisa, you said you've, you've had outside entities that have...
They've emailed us and asked if we're...
So, there are people that are interested to come make money here, just to grab the market that might be available here, just like what's going on in dinosaur.
They're just looking for a entity that doesn't have one, you know what I mean?
I mean, if you look at the three buildings, or I seen two buildings in dinosaur, that's the first time I've seen them since they opened. I mean, they're the two nicest buildings in town over there, you know, so, but, you know, again, it's, it's outside entities that are coming to, you know, basically make money off of our community. It, you know, it's kinda like a, a truck stop gambling deal, you know?
Right. Like I said, whatever you guys, your opinions.
I just don't see how people are gonna travel through, 'cause that's where most of the, the income for those people over in dinosaur are coming. Why are they gonna come through dinosaur to come to Rangel to get their pot? Or why are they gonna come through Grand Junction, from Grand Junction over the top of Douglas Pass to get marijuana? I don't know this for sure, I, I agree, but in my opinion, that's where, like Ty said, you're... you're getting that local group of people that's feeding off of that store, feeding to our community. I mean, I don't know that people aren't gonna travel through Dinosaur to come here, I don't know that, I can't say that, but.
I think that's fair, but at the same time, I think there's no harm in having a discussion about it and putting it before the people. And if it gets voted down, it gets voted down. If it gets voted for, it gets voted down.
Is there any, I know that, I've seen the revenue numbers, I don't recall them right off, for just what's going on in Dinosaur, but is there anything, I know you said like twenty percent of the town's income in parachute was coming from that? Is there any actual numbers to associate that?
They're under investigation for that problem right now.
In Dinosaur or in parachute? Yeah, I know in Dinosaur, but, I mean, just to wonder what the, how the, what the monetary impact is, you know.
They're on the interstate, it'd be so different compared to us.
Like you said, there probably wouldn't even be a market other than the locals, right?
Yeah, it'd be tough, 'cause they get people driving where they're close and being on the interstate, it'd be hard to compare the two markets.
I got you.
Even number for, it'd be hard to compare to Dinosaur, just.
You're right.
You know, if you drive by them every.
Full of Utah plates, right?
So, I mean, it'd be hard to compare what our numbers would even look like, you know, compared to other, especially those two, once they're right on highway. You'd have to find some, you know, a little more comparable off the beaten path to try to check in income numbers, I would think.
I don't even have to have a decision tonight, like I said, I just wanted to revisit it.
Yeah, it just.
Have some discussion.
Item H. So, discussion, discussion and action to approve a donation to this CNCC flight program for NIFA.
I've looked briefly at their board, what was the patches, the?
Well, the first level, if you wanted to get like the shirts and stuff, I think was a thousand, and then five thousand, and then ten thousand.
I just, I was, I mean, I was thinking like advertising, but I don't know if that's a great sense, a great, great use of money.
To me, you guys have talked about supporting CNCC, and I think the.
Yeah, I mean, even the, you know, the gesture that they give with the, was it the Red Cross or who was it that you're gonna support, you know, with emergency shelter and stuff? You know, we, you know, it's a, it's your you scratch my back, I scratch hers type relationship that we have, and, you know, it's a good relationship.
Well, and Ron and Trevor are really trying to foster, you know, a better relationship between the community and CNCC, and I think that goes a long ways towards supporting, obviously, one of their better programs, because they put Rangel on the map, whenever they win something, it's from Rangel, Colorado, you know, so.
Yeah, the accomplishment, you know, coming in second to the Air Force Academy is pretty significant for this small.
Right, right.
Program, so.
We do have the funds, like I said, in the economic development, if you guys want to do one of those levels, or, you know, you could do something less too, it doesn't have to be the levels they put forth.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the thousand dollars.
I second that. Actually, I do, I think I'm gonna personally get me a jacket, 'cause I think it's that impactful to our community to support them.
Motion's been made by Andy, second by Matt, all those in favor of donating a thousand dollars to CNCC Flight Program?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let me get back on this thing. So, informational items. Item A would be Connor's graduation, May first.
Yes.
Is that right?
And it'd be great if any or all of you wanted to attend, I think it'd be a great way to support him, he, like I said, did an awesome job.
I think I'm gonna go to it, if anybody wants to ride.
I'll be your co-pilot.
Okay.
And then Chevron called, we don't have the particulars, but they're gonna be doing a little event, a tree planting event, and we'll get an invite, and they might have a little barbecue to go along with that. And she said as soon as she has more information, she would get that to us, but just to kinda give you a notice about the date, you probably saw the correction that the flood mapping had in the Herald Times, and they did allow us to get about another month on that to put in some more, you know, content and talk with Paul about our concerns. And we got another general dividend from Pinnacle, about five, a little over five thousand. Was that up to the right? Yeah. Yeah. And I haven't yet come up with a plan for the other dividend that we got back, I kinda wanted to maybe save that for maybe about halfway through the year and do something then.
Can we put that on our list to talk about at our retreat, please?
Yes.
What about Western Slope COBA with their event that they bring up here?
Like about what the project is?
Yeah, we.
We haven't nailed that down completely yet, I'm still talking with Connie about that. I mean, even though we're gonna do the mapping of the Main Street, we talked about even trying to just get the rock back in order, because it'll probably be a couple of years before we can actually follow through with that plan, 'cause I do believe the Kennedy Drive Path is a bigger project for next year, so it'd probably be at least a year after. So, we talked with Jocelyn and Connie about getting, you can get little stakes, you know, that you can keep those rocks from sliding and kinda just putting that back in some order, so at least it wouldn't just, you know, look in shambles. I don't wanna go to a lot of expense, because you don't wanna put it back in and then just tear it down, but if it's gonna stay that way for a couple of years, it might be kinda nice to get that hillside kinda back in a nicer looking condition. But that was, we're not final on that, we were just trying to think of ideas. If you guys have anything that you'd like to see then that might be more important, just holler, 'cause we're still talking about it.
Item sixteen looks the same, scheduled announcements are in front of you. Unless anybody has anything else, we can adjourn at eight thirty-seven.